Good evening, everyone. I'll call to order this public hearing of the Urbana City Council Committee of the Whole. Could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hersi.
Ms. Colasetti.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilken.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
And the item of business is public input. Shall I read first? Okay. Notice is hereby given that the City of Urbana Committee of the Whole will hold a public hearing on Monday, July 4th, 2024 to approve a resolution of support for the State of Illinois Community Development Block Grant-Coronavirus Grant, CDBG-CV. DCEO, oh, we don't have the acronym spelled out, has made a total of $15 million in community development block grant coronavirus CDBG-CV funds available for construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, or acquisition of properties for homeless, as defined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, shelters dedicated to provision of stable, safe, and adequate housing with a goal of increasing capacity to pre-COVID levels. On July 31st, 2024, the City of Urbana, in partnership with Hope Village, Inc., an Illinois not-for-profit organization, will submit an application to DCEO for $1.2 million in CDBG-CV funding to aid in the construction of Hope Village. Activities that will be undertaken with CDBG-CV funding will include construction of tiny homes for medically fragile individuals who have experienced homelessness. 100% of the grant funds proposed in this application will benefit very low-income individuals. There will be no displacement as a result of Hope Village project. The completion of Hope Village will help further certain community development and housing needs as described in the City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium Consolidated Plan for Fiscal Year 2022 through 2024 and Annual Action Plan for Fiscal Year 24 through 2025. The complete prioritized list of City of Urbana and Urbana Home Consortium, community development, and housing needs are as follows. One, affordable housing. Two, homeless prevention and services. Three, non-homeless special needs. Four, community development needs, blight reduction, public facility improvements. Five, economic development. And six, youth services. The City of Urbana's CDBG records, including all CDBG-CV application materials, are available for review by the public at the Community Development Services Department, 400 South Fine Street, Urbana, Illinois, 61801. Records may be examined weekdays 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And now we'll take public input at this public hearing. If you'd like to speak, please approach the microphone, state your name, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Urbana Committee of the Whole. My name is Pastor Melinda Carr and I'm going to read a statement letter, statement slash letter. The purpose of this letter is to make known that we are standing on our position and concerns regarding the proposal in the development of Hope Village. It is still our concern that traffic and access to Hope Village through Carver Park have not been fully addressed in the best interests of the neighboring residents, and other unresolved issues still remain. Ordinance number 2, 2023-07-023, page 4, section 1, number 2, quote, "The final site plan is responsive to the concerns of neighboring residents," unquote. We are asking that our concerns and recommendations will be taken care of. And this information for contacts here. This is the public input for today's public hearing. May I pass this on to you, City Clerk, so it's through the Committee of the Whole?
Would anyone else wish to address the Committee of the Whole at this public hearing? Okay, seeing none, and I don't think we had any emails to be read for this public hearing. We are adjourned. And we're not done yet, folks. Our next meeting, when we're ready, will be for the City of Urbana Committee of the Whole. Like to call to order, and could we have a roll call, please, when we're ready?
Ms. Wu.
Here.
Mr. Evans.
Here.
Ms. Hersi.
Here.
Ms. Bishop.
Here.
Ms. Wilken.
Here.
Mr. Quisenberry.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Thank you. There are no minutes for this meeting. I don't know of any additions to the agenda. Are there any additions? Seeing none. Next, we have presentations and public input. Not aware of any presentations on the agenda, so we'll have public input for the Committee of the Whole. Again, please approach the microphone, state your name, and you'd have five minutes for public input. We did have one email that came in that asked to be read aloud for today. It says, "Dear Mayor Marlin, City Council, City Clerk, Chief Boone, and Admin Team, I would like to follow up and share with you information that was not available to fit into the three-minute input last week. The School Resource Officer, SRO, at Urbana High School is a success story that can be used as an example in our city and perhaps our nation in many different ways. I've attached a photo of a student who, on his own, walked to shake hands with Chief Boone during his turn to receive the Mayoral Recognition Program certificate during the celebration. Please note this program recognizes students from all backgrounds, including our life skills students who volunteer in our community and provide services. Our Urbana High School students have developed skills to interact and communicate with our police officers. This is one of the best things we could offer to our youth. As an adult, we experience traumas from police, which often from outside Urbana, and project them onto each other and sadly onto our youth. As someone who was repeatedly mistreated by police at an early age, I understand the fear and mistrust. It took me 25 years of professional experience working with police to start gaining appreciation and respect for law enforcement officers. Even though Urbana Police had kindly protected me during my time in Urbana, I did not fully understand the healthy relationship between citizens and law enforcement officers until I witnessed the Urbana High School SRO interact with students, teachers, families, and volunteers. I understand that not everyone has had the opportunity I had to witness this incredible change at the high school, so I urge you, our elected officials, to seek out and talk to our school districts to learn more about this innovative change. By doing so, we can flip the script and have a respectful and positive working relationship with our law enforcement officers. I will do my best to support Chief Boone and Urbana Police in advocating for our youth and residents to develop healthy relationships with our law enforcement officers. I hope you join me. Thank you, Keneitha Fay." Okay, and I think any other emails or any public input from the audience? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on to staff report. There's none listed. No staff. Oh, yes, Diane.
I have an update, and this is regarding the Alternative Response Task Force that many of you I know are interested in. So I wanted to let you know the work of the Alternative Response Task Force is the next phase of the Barry Dunn Study. It's going to be guided by Michelle Winesuttle of Barry Dunn. And as described by Michelle, I just wanted to give a kind of a broad overview tonight, and we'll have more information next week, but the task force is going to be a working group comprised of a representative group of both community practitioners and key city personnel who have experience and expertise to inform the development of alternative service delivery processes. They'll also be seeking community input during the work of the task force to provide additional perspective. The Barry Dunn consultants have suggested areas of expertise that they believe are important to have represented on the task force, but we'll be circulating that to council later this week for your input and perspective and suggestions. Barry Dunn would like to bring this task force together to begin work at the end of July, depending on people's schedules and willingness to serve, and they would hope to complete their work by the end of the year, and that would be followed by the development of the Alternative Response Report. But all that is dependent on availability and time and work of the task force. So the end product will involve possible alternative response models, service providers, rough cost estimates, and an estimated timeline for implementation. But the message tonight is that Barry Dunn is ready to begin work on the next phase, and we'll be providing some more information later this week for your input, and probably schedule a discussion section next week just to get your sense of if you think the areas' representation are okay and represent what you're interested in. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, moving on to new business. First, we have resolution number 2024-07-048R, a resolution of support for a State of Illinois Community Development Block Coronavirus Grant, CDBG-CV, from Community Development.
I am pinch hitting for Braden this evening. He's enjoying a well-deserved vacation. This resolution of support is a little unusual because we don't typically need to provide that in advance of making an application, but in this case, we do. So I'll just walk through a lot of what you heard already in the public hearing announcement, but just to make sure it's been covered. So the State of Illinois has made $15 million available in CDBG-CV grant funds, and this is for urban shelter. The funds can be used for construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation, or acquisition of properties for homeless shelters, and the goal is to increase shelter capacity to pre-COVID levels. Only municipalities that receive annual CDBG allocations are eligible to apply. Pending approval of the proposed resolution, the Grants Division staff will submit an application to the state for $1.2 million in CDBG-CV funds to support the construction of Hope Village, and if that application is approved, the contracts will be executed in November of 2024, but we need to come back to you in order to get a resolution to accept the grant at that time. The current cost estimate for Hope Village construction is $12.5 million, and approximately $10.8 million has already been secured. The current gap funding is $1.3 to $1.7 million, and the nonprofit itself has been established. And this evening, we have two representatives here from Hope Village, if you have any specific questions for them, Marty Smith and Claudia Lenhoff. The grant application has secured commitments for five letters of support from service provider agencies, including Cunningham Township, The Stride Shelter, and CU at Home, and as the public hearing announcement indicated, all application materials are available for public review in community development during normal business hours. Hope Village Incorporated estimates that annual operating expenses will be almost $3 million, and operations will be supported through rental income, fundraising, and grants. And importantly, the Housing Authority of Champaign County has committed 24 housing vouchers to Hope Village, and this is a 15-year commitment. So if anyone has any questions or comments after this evening, you can direct those to Braden Belcher, our Grants Division manager, and I will do my best to answer any questions you have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. Are there questions? Ms. Mary Alice?
So you had mentioned that the non-for-profit had been formed. Is that correct?
Yes.
And the reason that we need to do this resolution is to, because we're the holders of the CDBG funds?
Yes, but, and this particular grant requires a resolution of support from the jurisdiction prior to making application. Requires a public hearing and a resolution just to make the application, which is unusual.
And when are they, if the funds are going to be released in November, when is the anticipated date of notification?
I don't know that detail, but I can find out.
Just a curiosity.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Yes, Chandra?
Can there be more than one application submitted for these funds from a municipality?
I think there, I think that's possible, but I think there's only one application that has basically come forward from the providers in the area, and everybody seems to be rallying behind this one. And we would need, if there was another application, then we'd need to have another public hearing and another resolution, and I believe the application date is the end of July.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have a few, I think I can ask here. And definitely all right to not have all the information right here if we need to come back for next week, but is there a way to make the application materials available in not just such a limited form? Like, it's my understanding right now, the only way you can access that is to physically come here during the work week.
Okay.
Is that right? So I understand there might be some, maybe, you know, classified nature if there's competitive proposals or something, but.
Okay.
I have a lot of sub-questions about like the breakdown of the budget. You mentioned, you addressed some with the annual cost and the support letters from other organizations, but I haven't been able to see or access any of that, so I didn't know if we're.
Looking for something online.
Yeah, something that the council and the public could reasonably access.
Okay, I'll talk to Braden about posting something.
Okay, because I think that would address a lot of the sub-questions.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions for tonight? Ms. Mary Alice?
I don't have a question, but can I make a motion? All right, I move approval on the consent agenda to the next city council meeting, resolution number 2024-07-04R? Sorry. 48R? Resolution of support for a State of Illinois Community Development Block Grant, I can't say the word, the Grant, CDBG-CV.
Second.
Okay, we have moved by Mary Alice for approval on the consent agenda, seconded by Chandra. Any discussion? I just have a quick one. Do I pass the chair for discussion? Yeah, Mary Alice, could you take the chair for a second?
Sure, I'll take the chair. The chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. I will just say that I will like some more information, and we'll probably have some more to say next week, but I can pull it off the consent agenda next week when we get there, but I do think that we need to see a little bit more information. I really want to learn more about the support from other organizations and be sure that we're distributing funds in the best way possible, a little more about the budget. And I hear the concerns of the community again, and I appreciate Pastor Carr for bringing that, and if people have any specifics that they feel aren't addressed, I'm open to hear them. Right now, it seems to me still kind of vague about traffic and unresolved issues, and if there are specific things, I would like to understand that better. So just saying that I'm in support of this. I still think that it's a high need, but I'm going to need a lot more information, and we'll probably have some things to say next week. Thank you.
All right, I'll relinquish the chair, back to Grace.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yes, Chandra?
Of course, I'm in support of this, but I wish that it could be a secondary, second application to build just a general homeless shelter in Urbana with some of these funds. I don't know if that is possible to look into, but, or with the timeline, it might be too tight, but for future considerations, if anything like this else comes up.
Thank you. Any last call, discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, hearing none opposed, that passes to City Council on the consent agenda. Thank you for the presentation. Next item is resolution number 2024-07-049R, a resolution approving a professional energy consulting services agreement, Good Energy LP, from Public Works. Looks like we have the wonderful Scott Test setting up. You didn't expect us to be moving so fast tonight, did you?
I'm right on time, and so are you. This item and the next item are related to the municipal electric aggregation program that we talked about a couple of weeks ago. The first resolution authorizes the execution of a professional services agreement. This allows our consultant to put us in a bid group with a number of other cities in central Illinois for soliciting prices for municipal electric aggregation supply for our residents. The resolution after that authorizes the mayor and/or the city administrator to execute a supply offer when we have that bid day event. You might remember, we talked about how these bids are good for the rest of the day, so if they get prices at, you know, 1:00 p.m., those prices have to be agreed to in a contract by 5:00 p.m. So we authorize some executive officer of the city to approve those prices ahead of time. And that, you know, that's this trouble we get into with these really tight timelines, and we may come back sometime in the future months and have a discussion about whether we want to change our ordinance regarding municipal electric aggregation so that this second resolution isn't necessary every two years. But right now, we're moving forward with a single bid event. Our consultant is looking at later this month, taking a number of cities to market to get some prices, and we take these two actions, agreeing the professional services agreement, and also authorizing the mayor and city administrator ahead of time so that we're ready to participate in that bid event. I'll take any questions you may have.
Thank you for the presentation. Questions for Scott? Chandra?
I have a two. What is, do you know ahead of time typically the range of pricing that we're approving for you?
No, what we're, and we can, we can get, take feedback tonight, but what, what we know ahead of time is, or what the consultant is gathering information for is, you know, is it a time where prices are, you know, going to broaden them out for the range of time that we have to start a new contract before our old one ends? And so they pick, you know, a month or a week where they think prices are going to be particularly low, and we go to bid and we see what we can get. If, and, you know, where we're coming from now is, if, you know, we're always trying to beat that default electricity supply price that the state provides through Ameren. If, where we're at now is, if the prices that we're getting in these market bids are above that, you know, we think that, you know, council and the public are not interested in signing up for that kind of contract, and so we would pass on that. If we get prices that are below the price that we're always trying to beat, then it's a question of can we squeeze in the cost of buying some renewable energy credits and still have some savings? Can we squeeze in the cost of taking a city or adding a city fee to make the city whole on the time that spends on this program and still have a savings? And I'm, you know, my, you know, what, the feedback that I get, you know, when we have these discussions at council and with the public is that, you know, first is, let's get good prices, and that's the first priority. Second priority is, let's buy as much renewable energy credits as we can, up to 100%, if there's a margin of savings that allows for that. And then third, let's get a city fee, again, if there's a margin of savings that allows for that, if, if there, you know, if, if there's, if there's a margin.
Okay, thank you. My second question is, how long is the agreement?
So it could be, it depends. So it could be as short as 18 months, and I don't think we would even want to consider anything shorter than that because this whole process involves, you know, per statute, sending a letter to all the residents, this is happening, and having that come once a year is, it's a bit much for people to receive. So 18 months is probably the absolute shortest we would even consider. Two years is typical. Three years has happened in the past. It's all about, you know, what prices come in at, what vendors are willing to do. So, you know, for instance, if electricity suppliers foresee that they're going to be able to get higher prices a year and a half from now, they probably don't want to sign a three-year contract and lock in low, whereas we would, and so it's that kind of game.
Okay, thank you.
Mary Alice?
From other cities who do this program, do you have any reference in terms of what type of bids that they've accepted?
Yeah, the state maintains a website. It's, if you keyword search "plug-in Illinois," you'll find it. It might be plug-inillinois.org, something like that. And there you'll find the currently published "price to compare," as they call it, that's the default electricity supply price. You will also find a list, and I think you can sort it by date, you know, so the most recent signed. You can find a list of every single municipal electric aggregation price, and you'll see as you scan through there that timing is everything, and, you know, if you've just signed a two-year or three-year agreement, well, you're not going to market, you know, six months later just because somebody else got a lower price. You're locked in, you've got to play that out. So timing is everything, and you'll see over time, prices come up and go down as the market moves for all the myriad reasons that the market moves.
Thank you.
Yeah, there's, I have a question here, Scott. Back to, I think, kind of Chandra's first question about, you'd mentioned how to determine that, about if, and you'd showed us before with Tim and sent out a survey, and we got responses from council on that, right, about when do we apply, what is our focus here? And so I guess kind of multi-part question. First of all, if you have more information or results of that survey?
I didn't get results. Carol, did you see results for that? Okay. I'll, I'll find out from Tim before we come back next week.
Okay, thank you. And then other part of that question about then, how or do we codify that selection method? Like, is that something to go in the resolution or the city code about we give authorization to purchase under these general guidance considerations?
Both of those are options. So in the resolution to authorize the mayor and city administrator, council can, if they so elect, say something to the effect of, you know, as long as the price is cheaper than the price to compare, or as long as the price, including 100%. or as long as the price, including 100% REX, is cheaper than the price to compare, you can, you can put those, those guardrails on it if you so choose. In the past, we've kept that a little bit loose so that we can make decisions like we did in the last contract where there was a small margin of savings and we squeezed in 26% renewable energy credits and maintained a margin of savings, but, but not the 100% that we used to do. The ordinance could also be changed. And I recommend changing the ordinance, at least in part, to have an enduring authorization for the mayor and city administrator to execute these agreements. But I think either would work. We can one-time authorize with certain guardrails, or we can put it in an ordinance. I don't have an ordinance drafted. So right now, you know, what, what we're talking about is just a one-time resolution for this iteration.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I'll make the motion.
Sure.
I'll move approval of Resolution Number 2024-07-049R, a resolution approving a professional energy consulting services agreement, Good Energy LP, onto City Council for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have moved by Chandra for consent agenda, seconded by Mary Alice. Discussion? No, I'll wait. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is moved to City Council. Next, under the same presentation, we have Resolution Number 2024-07-050R, a resolution authorizing the execution of a service agreement with the lowest responsible bidder for the supply of electricity for residential and small commercial retail customers. I think we've covered the presentation thoroughly enough. Any discussion on this or a?
We need a motion. Yeah, I will motion to the consent agenda, the resolution you just read.
Okay, motion by Mary Alice for consent agenda. Second. Seconded by Chandra. Now, any discussion on this one? Okay, we'll hear. Mary Alice, would you mind taking the chair, please?
Sure, I'll take the chair. The chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. I think this is another one that I will likely plan to take off the consent agenda next week, pending some information. And I would like to specify some of those things that we've agreed upon, just so that they are in writing. So I'm curious if we can have some more information and maybe a recommendation based on that for next week. I think that would be helpful. Yep, I think that's all. Thank you.
You like the chair back?
Yes, thank you.
All right, it's all yours.
Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that resolution is moved on to City Council consent agenda. Thank you, Scott. Next, we have Resolution Number 2024-07-051R, a resolution approving a right-of-way license agreement with Experience Champagne Urbana, an interpretive sign adjacent to 120 West Main Street from Public Works.
Good evening, council. Drop mine over here. Yeah, so we have a, nope, that was Scott's. License agreement to bring to you tonight. This is for a license agreement with Champagne, Experience Champagne Urbana. And what they're looking to do is for a part of the African-American Heritage Trail project, install a sign, an interpretive sign on the Main Street right-of-way, just in front of 120 West Main Street, which is the Cinema Art Theater. So here we have the location, a fairly small landscaping planting bed seen there in the north side of Main Street, halfway between Race and Broadway, shown there in red rectangle. See an image again from the street. So it was planting bed. They'll have the ability to make use of this for their sign as they need to. With, similar to other, another, you know, sign we brought to you, that was going on Goodwin Avenue, kind of a typical interpretive sign mounting here. The details for them to figure out is they, you know, figure out where the utilities are and so forth. But here also is the image of what they plan to put at this particular location where they're going to highlight history of black businesses in Urbana, particularly looking at the Shelton Laundry that was located on North Goodwin there. So our, our recommendation is for council to authorize the mayor to execute this license agreement with Experience Champagne Urbana for an interpret, an interpretive sign in this location. And if the ordinance is passed, the mayor will execute the agreement, and we will give Experience Champagne Urbana the go-ahead to construct the sign. Are there any questions?
Questions? Yes, James?
Yeah, can you, can you, thank you for the presentation. Can you tell me again the, you said it was the laundry that was?
Yeah, and I, I think hopefully the, in the packet, the text came up a little better. Yeah, if I can work on my eyesight here. This is 1104 North Goodwin. I've, I want to say that the building currently is maybe doing some kind of paper products or cardboard boxes or something like that, but they, it was historically this Shelton Laundry, which I learned, I learned what I learned about it from this sign. And so I, I've included in the packet and I encourage you guys to take a look.
And I take it that the location where the laundry was is not conducive to people being able to see the sign? So we're gonna, the location has been chosen for its visibility and ability for people to, to learn about it?
I, I would presume as much as well, and that'd be a good question, I think, for Champagne, or Experience Champagne Urbana. I'd be happy to pass that question along to Tim Moravec, who we were working with on this. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I've got just a few. If I could just clarify here with you, John, a few things. So it looks like it won't take up any sidewalk space, right?
Correct.
And just some things in the contract here, that it's for 20 years. We can terminate with 30-day notice. Says it specifically for these purposes and to be maintained and taken down if there's an emergency or some kind of thing. Is that all correct so far?
That sounds pretty standard, yeah.
Clarifying and for the public if there's details of this. And I was trying to find in the memo how much a permit like that would have cost. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, 64.40 cents per year, okay.
Right, right. That's, we currently have a 92 cents per square foot license fee, yep.
And have you heard?
Which we were, which we were recommending that, for what this would, you know, serve for the community. Our recommendation, if council's willing to do it, is to waive that fee.
And that's included in this resolution already, is that right?
Correct. In, in the actual license agreement itself, there is no, no exchange of money, the way it's written now.
And have you heard anything from surrounding business owners or operators or residents or anything? I don't know if we had any public input you heard.
No, no, and I, I mean, we didn't go and solicit public input, I'd say, from, from the neighboring property owners.
Thank you. Questions? Chris?
John, how is the content of the sign determined? How is that decided?
I do not know. I do not know.
Diane?
There's a committee that works with Visit Champagne, or Experience Champagne County that develops content and solicits information. So this has been, this has been a long time in the making.
Thank you. Any other questions or a motion?
I'll move approval of Resolution Number 2024-07-051R, a resolution approving a right-of-way license agreement with Experience Champagne Urbana, an interpretive sign adjacent to 120 West Main Street, for approval on the consent agenda.
Second.
Second, okay, sorry, moved by Chandra for consent agenda, seconded by Mary Alice. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes on to City Council. Thank you. Next, we have ordinance Number 2024-07-025, an ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 23-93 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at a certain intersection, Melissa Lane and Mark Trail.
Okay, thanks, Grace. And for this one, the stop sign for Melissa Lane and Mark Trail, we're asked, asking council to pass an ordinance for putting a stop sign for traffic that's on Melissa Lane to stop when they get to Mark Trail. It's a T-intersection. I'll show you a map in a minute here. Just the Background Traffic Commission unanimously voted to recommend this ordinance during its May meeting. We went ahead and installed the top, stop sign as a temporary measure, as were allowed by this section of the city code, but it, you know, requires ordinance from council for, to finalize and make it permanent. So it was uncontrolled with no stop signs. And this is because Melissa Lane was a short dead-end street before it was fully constructed in October 2023. And so this is really just bringing it to its logical conclusion of having a, you know, Melissa Lane, which just goes between Mark Trail and Hillshire Drive. Get that wrong, but just goes that, between those two stretches. So having a stop sign at each end of Melissa Lane would make sense for traffic flow. Hillshire, okay, I got that right. So here we show a map of South Ridge, the ninth, South Ridge subdivision in general. That Melissa Lane, of course, was built out last year. You'll see a lot of houses are already built out there today, are in constr, are in construction right now. Show where the stop sign is being proposed. Here's a close-up of that, again, for northbound Melissa Lane traffic, leaving Mark Trail with no stop signs through, through traffic there. Okay, so just kind of restating some of these things. And if council would approve, we would leave the stop sign in place as it is and just update our traffic schedule accordingly. Any questions?
Mary Alice?
I just want to confirm, because you, you showed two maps. One where you had the whole area with the stop signs, and this one, so Deer Ridge, Drive, and Mark Trail, it does have a stop sign?
It does.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that.
Correct, yeah, we just didn't carry over all them. Yep, yep.
All right, thank you. Chandra?
Did you do any observations after you put the temporary stop signs out? Just wondering how it's working out.
Did not do any active observations of it, have not heard any negative feedback, I could say. Which is not a, not a, you know, sure sign, but, yep.
Sure, thanks.
Any other questions? Or take a motion? Chandra and Mary Alice have been passing it back and forth all night. Or anybody else want to jump in?
It doesn't matter, Chandra. All right, I will move Resolution, I'm sorry, Ordinance Number 2024-07-025, an ordinance amending Schedule H of Section 2393 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code requiring stop signs at a certain intersection from Melissa Lane at Mark Trail to City Council on the consent agenda.
A second. Nice, changing it up. We've got, moved by Mary Alice for the consent agenda, seconded by Jaya. Any discussion? I just have a quick one. Mary Alice, would you mind taking the chair, please?
Yes, I'll take the chair. The chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. Just want to say thank you for bringing this forward, and also the Traffic Commission in a lot of these areas lately, and in somewhat informal response to Chandra's question, some things that I've heard as Ward Six and in this area is some complaints about speeding and construction. And I think that the overall, the feedback has been wanting of stop signs. So I think that they're very well received. I was so excited to see the one on trails in Myra Ridge with the little orange flags. So I don't know entirely, but when I do see people around the neighborhood or get a few emails or something, it's usually positive feedback about getting the stop signs, especially with this new construction area. I hope that some of the neighbors will be pleased with less construction happening, and the roads finished, and stop signs. So thank you for that, and appreciate looking into the stop signs here. I would take the chair back.
I will relinquish the chair back to Grace.
Thank you. Any last discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is moved on to City Council. Thank you. And next, we have ordinance Number 2024-07-026, an ordinance amending Schedule M of Section 23-190 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, tow-away zones, Gregory Street, north of Fairview Avenue, also from Public Works.
All right, thank you. Okay, and so this, we're talking about Gregory Street on the south side of King Park. So this is north of Fairview Avenue, where Gregory Street is a cul-de-sac, and we're looking at the, you know, cul-de-sac end of this because currently there's no, no no parking restrictions at the cul-de-sac. So, you know, if a vehicle were to park in the cul-de-sac, you really can't use it as it's intended. It's a Y-shaped cul-de-sac, if anybody's keeping score of their cul-de-sac geometry, which does allow you to do a three-point turn, bring you back to driver's ed training. And we did, after discussion with Deputy Chief of Police Rich Searls, he concurred that it would make sense to install these no parking tow-away zone signs in, you know, kind of keeping with, make sure, making sure the cul-de-sac is able to be used. I'll show you, it's a very limited area here. Yeah, so here you can see two views of north Gregory Street, side by side. The, you know, north on, north up with King Park to, you know, north. With the red shaded in area would be where we don't want cars to park, so we can use that cul-de-sac. And so we've got three signs positioned to make it abundantly clear that, you know, here's where the no parking is in effect. Really just copying what is happening over at Harvey Street, just, you know, a block west there. Same exact configuration on the south side of King Park, just that one had no parking tow-away zone signs. This one did not. And we had, we'd heard from a resident of the area about the issues with, you know, if cars are parking there. And they, they brought it up actually to the Park District, thinking it was the Park District's jurisdiction. And they passed it on to us, and the Park District was like, we like this. Also, we like to be able to access the park this way, too. So if they don't park there, we're cool with that, too. But really, it's, you know, the primary reason is to keep the cul-de-sac functioning as it's intended. Yeah, just emphasizing that Harvey Street, right next to Gregory Street, has the same configuration, but already has the tow-away zone signs in place. So, said that one already. This ordinance would allow police to have vehicles that are parked within the cul-de-sac, towed and impounded at the owner's expense. And, but this, you know, is a very narrow restriction, so it wouldn't impact the adjacent property owner's, you know, ability to park in front of their homes. Here's just kind of in words, the, what I told you about, our feedback we got from one of the residents and the Park District. So we're asking City Council to pass the attached ordinance. It would allow, would prohibit parking and allow for towing vehicles within the cul-de-sac on Gregory Street that's 475 feet to 500 feet north of Fairview Avenue. And similarly, like with the stop signs, we've installed these no parking signs already. So if council's in agreement with this, we'll just update the schedules accordingly and leave the signs in place. Okay, any questions?
Mary Alice?
Would you mind going back to the aerial view? Yep, so it looks like on the right-hand side, is that actually paved, the, the outside of the Y? It looks like it's?
It is. It's, I believe in this view, it was silted in or had leaves or something like that in it.
But it is, it is completely paved out to the?
Yeah, in that, in that Y shape, yep. It is.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one. Do you know if, it looks like there's not any public parking nearby for the park? Do you know if there is any parking, if someone were wanting to drive to King Park?
I don't know what the, you know, answer the Park District give. I, I know I can get, you know, from personal experience, it's not the easiest thing to park next to King Park. I mean, it's, it's a neighborhood park, is my understanding. But on-street parking, you know, is kind of, kind of the name of the game there, I believe.
Thank you. Any questions or a motion? Jaya?
I'll make a motion, change things up. Move approval on the consent agenda for ordinance Number 2024-07-026, an ordinance amending Schedule M of Section 23-190 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, tow-away zones, Gregory- Towaway Zones, Gregory Street, north of Fairview Avenue.
Second. Okay, thank you. We have Moved by Jaya for the Consent Agenda, seconded by Chandra. Any discussion? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That passes on to City Council. Final item of new business is Resolution Number 2024-07-52R, A Resolution Authorizing Execution of an Intergovernmental Cost Sharing Agreement for an Illinois Environmental Protection Agency-sponsored, one-day household hazardous waste collection event, also from Public Works. Back to Scott.
Good evening again. I did hear back from Tim Cowan, Public Works Director, on the previous item that I was discussing with you. He got one response from that survey. So if you want to respond to that before next week, we can bring those results back. You're also free to, you know, if it's not making sense to you, just email your thoughts to Tim and I. This next item is a Resolution Authorizing an Intergovernmental Agreement. This is another item that we do every year generally. Another one, we might come back in a few months and talk about an ordinance that would create an enduring authorization. This is a, I don't like this view, hold on, see if I can change it. This is an event to collect and recycle household hazardous wastes. Household hazardous waste is materials that are hazardous. If they were in a business, they would be regulated, but it's impossible to regulate, you know, 10,000 single-family residences, and so that gets a special category in the law called household hazardous waste. And, still not helping. And those materials are, are not required or regulated to, to go to a special collection. And if we don't collect them, they go to the landfill or get dumped or stay in someone's garage or basement where they are an environmental health hazard. And so we have these one-day events. This one's funded by Illinois EPA substantially. Somebody help me out here with the setting to make this look better.
Maybe bottom-right-ish, like those little icons, maybe?
That's better.
And then zoom in a bit, I'm hearing?
Hit Control+ it should make it big.
There we go.
Yeah, and then you can maybe zoom in a bit there.
There we go. So we, we cost-share these events with the household hazardous waste as opposed to electronics recycling, the cost is extremely expensive for disposal, which is why these only happen when we get Illinois EPA funding, and so we did. The cost-sharing that's going on here is actually the ancillary event management that the municipalities collaborate on. And so you see here the, the cost for that. What I'm showing you here on the screen is, we're going to have a slightly changed, or you can approve this updated, there's a couple of changes from some of the other municipalities after we had already scheduled our, our approval. And so there was some, some slight changes, some clarification that it's two golf carts, you know, for $275 total for the event rather than $275 each. And then our, our portion of the funding is, is up slightly from what we had originally presented to you in, in packet. This was supposed to show, show strike-through, but it's not rendering here. Let's see if I can show that here.
May I just clarify? That is what I'm seeing in the packet.
There we go.
Oh, no, it went from 30 cents to 48 cents. Oh, no, there's, okay, some dollar differences. Sorry, go on.
Yeah, it's hardly different. It's, it's a small amount. And now that we've got the full strike-through here, you can see here's one of the changes in, in clarifying how the golf carts are paid for. Anyway, it's the ancillary event management type things that are, that were cost-sharing with the other municipalities.
Can we see the updated amount again?
Mm-hmm.
Just that table. Thank you. Yeah, I'm still seeing 793.48 is in the packet number.
In our packet, same amount.
Which is great.
Maybe you got an updated copy?
Wanted to clarify for anyone else.
How about this item D?
Yeah, the two golf carts is on there too.
Is, as, oh, okay.
Two golf, yep, we're all up to date in the packet.
Right.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Scott. Was there more to your presentation?
Nope, that's it.
Open for questions, questions on this? Yes, Chris?
Scott, I have a general question, and if you can't answer it, that's fine, but, and maybe anybody else here could answer, but I remember during the ARPA, there was a group, I forget the name of the group, an environmental group, that was trying to build the permanent hazardous waste collection. Where are we at with that, or is?
Yeah.
Is that ever going to happen, or?
Yeah, that's still in process, so there's, it's Champagne County Environmental Stewards. There's a number of steps they're going through. You know, they, they're working with consultants, they do feasibility studies, they have bought land, they're going to be coming to the city at some point for all the permitting issues. They'll be going to the state for permitting issues. And they're working on architectural designs for the facility, so that's all still moving forward. It's going to be, I couldn't tell you the timeline, but it's going to be, it's not going to be done this year, so.
Is it going to be in Urbana?
The property they bought is in Urbana, so it still has to get permitted, so.
Yeah, but I mean, they plan to be in Urbana, that's great. Thank you.
Any other questions? We can take a motion? Jaya?
I'll make a motion for approval on the Consent Agenda of Resolution Number 2024-07-052R, A Resolution Authorizing Execution of an Intergovernmental Cost Sharing Agreement for an Illinois Environmental Protection Agency-sponsored, one-day household hazardous waste collection event.
Second.
Give it to James.
Yeah, we'll go with James, change it up, so we get the, the Jays on there and change it up. Okay, so we have Moved by Jaya for Consent Agenda, seconded by James. Any further discussion? Yes, James?
Yeah, thank you, Scott, for this. I wish we could do this more often than we do it, because unlike electronic waste, which you can take to some of the recyclers in town, there's no other option for this. And I, I still hope that our support through the ARPA funds for a, a center here in our community come to fruition at some point.
Thank you. Any other discussion? I have one. Mary Alice, would you mind taking the chair again, please?
I'll take the chair. The chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. I'll just echo, thanks for bringing this up and all involved in this event. I agree that, yeah, the one-day event is still absolutely needed, and then a permanent place even more accessible is even more of a need and a benefit. From my understanding, some of the estimates I've heard is that the one-day events can collect roughly 1% of our community need of collection. So I think that, you know, these one-day events are absolutely great and I support, and also do highlight the need for more accessible, more frequent collection events. And I did just want to mention some things about the cost here too, just as we're considering down the road balancing a cost for a permanent place, which I have a conflict on, but just as we're balancing that versus the cost of these one-day events, that I think there's some economy of scale. And just a few points here, I just did want to offer, I saw the $710 for renting a 10x10 tent, and just offering, well, it's got like a 12-by-24-foot one y'all could use for free or something, if you want to cut down on some of those costs. I think the space and the golf cart's a great price, and if we can help with some other awnings or something, be happy to help with that. So, yeah, thank you again, and looking forward to this one event, and hopefully can continue to grow, so it's not just one day. Thank you.
I will relinquish the chair back to Grace.
Thank you. And any last call for discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes on to City Council on Consent Agenda and concludes New Business. Thank you all. Next, we have public, or sorry, Council Input and Communication. Yes, Diane?
I would just like to let the community and council know that we still have vacancies on many of our boards and commissions. We have about 20 different boards and commissions in Urbana that offer advice and recommendations to the council. Over 100 seats to keep filled with volunteers, and I appreciate each and every person who has volunteered for a board and commission. So if people are interested in serving, we have openings on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, the Building Safety Code Board of Appeals, the Civilian Police Review Board, Community Development Commission, Design Review Board, Historic Preservation Commission, Human Relations Commission, Plan Commission, Sustainability Advisory Commission, and Tree Commission. Some of these commissions were set up with nine members, which is a lot of seats to keep filled for even an individual commission, so we're always looking for people who are willing to serve. If you're interested, please go to urbanaillinois.us/boards, and you'll have everything listed there and descriptions of each boards and commissions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Council input? A quick one. Mary Alice, would you mind taking the chair for me one more time?
I will take the chair. The chair recognizes Grace.
Thank you. Did just want to highlight, echo, if fellow Council members are willing and available to take that survey on the municipal electric aggregate, because I would like to discuss some of those terms more next week, and that might help speed along some of the conversation, if you're available to do that. We got an email on that. And also just want to say that I'm curious about the Alternative Response Task Force and learning more about that next week. I appreciate the, the notice that we'll have more next week, and I'll look forward to that, and definitely would like to keep this task force and the response model community focused. I think that's all.
Do you want me to adjourn? Alright.
Sure.
With no further business in front of the sc...